Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the third day, April 13th, school committee meeting here. High School Library. Can I get a motion to approve the bills? So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? And can I get a motion to approve the minutes? We both have executive minutes and meeting of March 24th, 27th, and the April 3rd. So move, Mr. Chairman?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Alls in favor? Thank you. Mr. McIntyre, by the way, is off and has an excused absence, so. We have a student rep this evening.
Oh, we do. Yes, we do.
Welcome.
This year's all-school production of the musical Oklahoma was a success. CHS Spanish students will depart for Spain on Friday, April 14th, and will return on Friday, April 21st. The CHS first robotics team will compete at Nationals in St. Louis beginning on Wednesday, April 26th. The SATs will be held at CHS on May 6th. Seniors are presently working on scholarships, which are updated regularly on Navions. AP exams will take place at CHS during the first week of May. The junior prom will be held at the Chalkset Inn on April 29th. And the spring concert will be held at CHS on May 4th. Thank you.
Thank you.
PTA, anybody this evening?
PTA, nope.
And I don't see Kelly, no?
Nope.
No.
Nothing from the CTA? All right. Well, I want to welcome Dr. Meyer and his wife Hannah and the children to our meeting. I'd like to ask the committee to formally vote to approve the contract which we will sign. So I guess I need a motion to approve that and then.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the contract for the next superintendent of some public schools, Dr. Meyer.
My second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Thank you.
And with that, Dr. Meyer, please come up and we'll link this. It's been a long process, but we, but it's been a good process and I think, I think we all feel confident in the future and the district will be in good hands and a successful transfer between our president, Mr. Ngano, and Dr. Meyer and I'd say welcome formally. So I guess we have to sign all four of these and.
Yes.
You know what?
Start it.
Well, start it around and I can sign last actually. I can sign one. I'll look at them all signed.
Everybody has pens. Sign and, sign and, sign and pass. I thought you said Friday the 13th. It's not Friday.
It's the 13th.
Yes. Absolutely. Steve will get one and I don't know if we all get one or.
To sign all of them?
All of them.
Should send them towards, send them down to Terry maybe?
So just come back to us. Mary, I promise I won't lose in the meantime. Yes.
Almost like buying a house.
Sorry if I say a couple things.
Absolutely expected.
All right. So first of all, thank you. I think it's, as you said, it's been a lo, it's been a long process, but I'm excited for this opportunity. I have been the whole time and I'm really excited to get going. I did prepare sort of a little transition, close kind of transition schedule to start sort of getting acclimated to the district. I had an opportunity to talk a little bit to Mr. Ngano before the meeting started. One of the, one of the first dates on here would be April 24th, which is the Monday after vacation of, I think, the next school committee meeting. So I'm going to try to make that a day where I could come to the district and go to their administrative team meeting in the morning, probably hang out around the superintendent's office, start getting some paperwork and gathering documents and come to the school committee meeting that night. And then also use that as an opportunity when I meet with the administrators to kind of schedule some days, hopefully spend some days in the buildings, spend with each building. I think there's a lot of valuable time between now and the end of the year that you want to make sure that you have an opportunity to capture some, some input and feedback from the faculty before everyone runs away for the summer and the students. You know, I'd like to try to take an opportunity to sort of maybe meet with some students or shadow some students and do that type of stuff. So I just put some of these thoughts together. You know, if you're, if you're okay with me, at least come in the Monday after break and we can talk about anything after that. You know, I'm fine to, you know, do as much or as little as you want me to do, but I'm anxious to just kind of get going and, and like I said, gather information while we have the opportunity, you know, before, before we lose everyone for summer because that'll be here before you know it.
Yeah, it will. That sounds great and look forward to hearing your ideas and obviously we'll have an opportunity to check through the schedule, you know. I'm sure that's fine. But yeah, no, that's the next meeting and to hear your plan and how you.
Yeah, so hopefully that Monday I'll have a chance to meet with the administrators. I'll be able to tweak some of this stuff and then at that school committee meeting that night I can maybe provide you with an update of maybe some dates we decided on or other things like that so you have an idea of what that's, what's going on and obviously you can review this down if you have any questions or suggestions. We could talk about that next meeting.
Great.
Well, I can say welcome on board and, you know, we look forward to many years of effective service.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Be in touch.
Give a enjoyable vacation week.
I have them here and you don't get them to Sharon, right? Should someone tell Stevie he really doesn't have to stay if he.
Yeah, you don't have to stay for the meeting.
We know this is exciting and this is.
Exciting as this would be for them perhaps.
Yes. They can sit through this, they can sit through anything, trust me.
They put him asleep, might be good.
Yes.
They were excellent.
Yes.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
All right, Karen, you want to come forward? This is, Karen's been leading this initiative. I can promise you it hasn't been easy from the town side to get things going. It's in your pack, but now Robert is the only one that has to sign these three. Karen can talk about it, but why don't I pass these down to, to Robert? I have to sign it, Robert has to sign it, and ultimately Mike Ward has to sign it. Go ahead, Karen.
This is just the cost allocation agreement between the town and the school and it's the expenses that they can charge to the school that are put on the end of year report. The only thing that changed from the years past is that we increased the, the town treasurer was at 30% and we increased it to 40%. And before it was 30% for the treasurer and 40% for the accountants. By the way, that said, would we be okay with increasing them both to the 40% and Terry was okay with that, so we increased that. Other than that, everything is the same that you've been using through the years, it's just you never had a formal agreement.
Never.
If you have any questions, it's, I mean, that can go over if you would like, but, yep, go ahead.
So is there a formula that determines what allocation the school department is required to pay versus the municipal departments? In other words, how did we, why did we go from 30 to 40%? Was that based on some kind of metric or?
They did not have it based on any type of metric. They, but in seeing what some of the other towns, it's very reasonable because they, expenses for the school are pretty much, you know, a large part of the town. So when she had suggested it be the 40% for both, we were okay with that.
We don't know why it was 40 and 30. That was, again, we never had a formal agreement, never. They just did it and I guess they let us know. I'm not even sure if they let us know. So it is true that, you know, most, most schools are 50% of a town's budget anyway, so.
So when she suggested the 40%, I thought that was very reasonable, so I didn't go any further. With the, the rest of it, I did request that each year they give me backup to check. And before I brought this to you, which is why I was waiting for it to you, I wanted the backup to check to make sure that it's what they were saying, they were doing is what they were doing. So I did go through a lot of backup. I went through all the benefits, the health insurance benefits and actually went from each bill to the payroll, to the employee and to do a real good thorough check and balance before I, you know, approved it all. So each year they're going to have to give us the backup prior to me putting on the end of year report. And then I did add one other thing on it because what I had a little bit of difficulty with the town was that in the end of year report, you're not only supposed to have the actuals, but you're also supposed to have a budget for the town expenses and I was having difficulty to get that. What I added with this was if they do not give me one and I'm about to do my end of year report, then we add 3% to what their expenses are because I have to submit my end of year report. So I did not, one of the, the auditor had asked me, why is the town's expenses the same on their budget as their actual? And I said, because that's what they're giving me. So to account for that in case they're not ready when I'm doing the end of year report, we've added the 3% increase for that. But other than that, it's really the same. It's the, the insurances for the town, the health and the, not dental because that's paid by the employers, by, I mean, employees. So the health, the unemployment, the insurance, that debt retirement, they did give me the schedules. I got copies of the insurance bills. The town rubbish, they use 4.7% and the water and sewage stays on actual. So we can go back to them if there's anything that we would like to change, but it sounded to me from Diane and Mike that they were okay with it being postponed like it is.
I just, I would like to thank Mrs. Sheridan for doing this. I think we uncovered the fact that we did not have this agreement back when we were looking at facilities management position and we started looking at other districts and what they had and, and one of the things that became obvious as we started drilling down through was that we never had any formalized anything. So I think it was a testament to thoroughness and chasing, not only chasing it down, but, you know, breaking it out so that every, every aspect of it is delineated and we had nothing like that before. And like I said, it was sort of a discovery, I think, that it didn't exist when, when we started looking at the facilities position and as I said, what other towns had done versus what we did. So I thank you for that and now you have a baseline as well, so.
But you did bring up a good point because when they do get the facilities director, that will be something that will have to be added to this before they can add that to the end of year report.
So that's something we can negotiate. So that's something that, obviously, Dr. Meyer's first headache, it'll be, you know, so, but you get advance notice. But I think that, but the agreement and how it works out and how that comes about, that's still in the future, but, but now we have a good model to add to.
So just one quick question. So the disagreement is going to be looked at every year or is it something that once we sign it, it's indefinite? Can we negotiate, be negotiated at any given point in time? How does that work?
It's, it's an agreement that is, until you decide to change it, it's just going to be in effect. So that's why when the facilities come in, director comes in, you will want to change that because anything that's not in this agreement, they're not going to be able to add to the end of year report, thus they won't be able to use any of their chapter 70 lines for.
Well, let's say in a couple of years we see that something's not as optimal, so we can go and say.
You can sit down.
That's what I want to, I want to tie everybody else's hands.
Right. And if we found that another district was, you know, was at 30% or 60, but whatever it would be, I mean, that's really how, how you have the ability to sit down.
So if we negotiate every year.
Exactly.
I did look at several of the districts and this is a very reasonable.
Good.
So if it had been something that was unreasonable, I would have brought it to you and said, but I did not think that, especially after I got the backup, I did not think that the expenses, the way that they were doing, were really unreasonable anyway. And even moving to the 40% was still very reasonable considering we are the bulk of their, their budget. So. So if they're, if you're all set with that, I believe Mike is, was already going to bring it to his committee.
I believe so. We need a formal vote from these guys and then we go to Mike and.
So I'll make a motion, we accept the.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other questions? Like I said, it's something now we have the agreement and it's something that if something changes or if they.
We finally have an agreement.
Yeah.
No one ever came up with it and I think they were kind of doing whatever they wanted. Now it's on paper.
Right. And we, you know, we actually didn't know. That's one of the things we discovered. We didn't know what the numbers were, so now we have everything laid out in black and white and something to work from and.
And you're really not supposed to put those expenses to the end of year unless you have a formal agreement, so.
That's another story. For another day.
So it's, it's worked somehow.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you. The June meeting date, I believe for like the second year in a row, if it wasn't last year, it was the year before, we ended up scheduling a school committee meeting on Election Day. And that's just probably not good, depending upon what you're doing yourself and everything else. So we usually only have one meeting in June and I believe one in July and one in August anyway. Sometimes, is it two in August maybe?
It is usually two.
Two, okay. So it's one, one, and two for the summer. But anyway, so we're looking to change the June school committee meeting to Tuesday, June 6th. And obviously we will be in school, but I know Mary is gone, I think the next to the last week, I'm gone the last week. So this would probably be the best and we're, we're avoiding town meeting, which would be the first Monday. And then elections are the, the second month, yes, so. So this will be a night after town meeting, I believe, right? June 6th?
And the elections, what?
And the elections will be the following Monday.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that we reschedule the June 5th meeting to June 6th to accommodate the town meeting.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Terrific.
Thank you.
And that will be our last meeting of the school year, I guess you'd say. All right. Mr. Chairman, back to you.
Well, first of all, I wanted to congratulate the high school on the, on the play. I think the weather couldn't have been worse, but my wife and I should be there and I think it got worse the next night, so I'm not sure how they did, or the next, you know, the matinee the next day. I'm not sure what, what happened, but we did manage to go and I, I mean, I felt bad for the kids because they obviously poured their heart and soul into it and it was a nice production, it's a great musical and we enjoyed it and congratulations to them for all their hard work. You never know when, when the weather decides in New England to do something unpleasant and it certainly managed that weekend. But anyway, just wanted to, you know, to say it was, it was quite nice. Do we have anything on the marketing side for me?
Kind of indirectly, just an update because we're going to have a district track relay on April 29th and the reason I bring it up is because we are going to try to film that and market our facilities there. And the way it's possible this year is to host a meet like that, we needed to put in the second long jump pit and that's something that we.
I was going to ask you, where are we?
Yeah, we, so there was the people that paint the lines and do the surfacing, they didn't get to paint the lines until the winter came, they didn't get to it, so they just finished it last week. So, so the, the long jump pit is squared away, ready to go and I'm talking with Mr. Morrison about how we can best try to capture that day because I think it's going to be, you know, if we, if the district track meets go well, then we can look hopefully in the future to have, have, have a, have a state track meet there. So it's, the officials will be here, they'll see how the, how the relay, the district relays go, how we handle it. But we can, you know, we can have it now and it's good and it was collaboration between us, the town, and our Bates Construction helped out, they donated all their time to actually dig the pit and, and help it out. So it was a, it's, it's when it's all, it's pretty much wrapped up now, but when it's all done, it's, I think it's a, it's a, it's a nice story about, you know, the schools and the town and the community working together to, to, to give us that. And now because of that, we can have a much larger stage to present our facilities to the rest of the state. So I think it'll be, I, I think there's going to be upwards of like 200 athletes here for that, for that day, so like times that by.
Throughout from what?
Yeah, yeah.
And also, don't forget, on graduation day, there'll be 1,500 participants. It's a middle school track meet from, I don't know how many, what areas are coming, but somebody set that up too. So on Clinton High's graduation day, this place will be booming over here. So that'll be a nice way too to kind of highlight our, our great facility.
Yep. And it'll be good, I know Coach Van Ass is working out who's going to handle the concessions, be an opportunity for like a class or, or some, some group to, to make some money because there'll be people there, so.
And the date again?
Oh, I'm sorry, April 29th. It's a Saturday.
And they'll use that concession stand, so it'll be busy.
Oh, yes, yeah. That's where we can make a little bit of money, definitely.
Awesome. Is there anything under old business?
Just a quick, you guys mentioned my favorite topic, facilities director. And I just heard today, by the end of the summer, it will, it will happen. So that's something Steve is going to, Steve will have to, you know, take over. He, the bottom line is he and, and Mike Ward are the people who select the facilities director. And I'm sure there's going to be a committee formed and that kind of thing, but the bottom line is, according to the agreement that we all signed, the superintendent of schools and, and the administrator, the town administrator ultimately pick the next person. So I don't know where we, you know, you guys pushed it quite a bit, what, about what, three months ago, four months ago? I did meet with Mike about it. He, he felt in a month it would be done and, and we're still, I think it's locked up in the personnel board right now for whatever the reason. But anyway, the next plan is by the end of the summer, we'll have somebody in place. More than likely, it'll take one whole year of, of that person getting to know, you know, his sort of new staff or her new staff and, and kind of the lay of the land before budgetary things really take over.
Okay. Awesome. So old, new, anything pending? So this will be.
I got something new.
Oh, you do?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I thought you were still on old.
Well, I didn't hear there was anything else.
Oh, we still.
Okay.
All right, no, on Tuesday, April 25th, I guess we got our, our official invitation to the combination budget presentation with the Board of Selectmen, FinCom, and the school committee. I don't know if that would be here or there or where, but they're looking at Tuesday, April 25th. So I need to find out if you guys are available for that time. That's when we present our case to.
And what time would that be?
I have no idea. I don't think they told us. It's usually six or seven, but I, we can get back to you. And I'm not sure if they're, they're even, if it's even set in stone. I, I think they're trying to get everybody together and, you know, we're going forward with the budget that you, that you approved and again, we haven't had much direction from the town. Mr. Tombolo has visited us and given us his opinion on things, but, you know, that's not necessarily the town's opinion. We'll, we'll see how it all works out from here.
Okay.
I'm not available.
No?
Next Tuesday.
Two weeks, or two, right?
Oh, it's the Tuesday after.
Isn't it? Yes, it's the week after February vacation.
Depending on the time.
Okay.
Later better than earlier. It'll be better for me. I have a parent meeting at my school for the Washington DC trip. So six to seven.
Okay, so it could be like.
Seven would be perfect.
Seven or 7:30?
7:30 would be better.
7:30?
Right, Joe?
Yeah, 7:30.
All right, why don't I get back to them for 7:30? They always love my show, I know that, so.
As can we all, sir.
All right.
Is Mike, is Mike, Mike should be okay for Tuesday, right?
We can email, yeah, we can email everybody to make sure.
Follow up, follow up with an email, that would be good.
All right, we'll say 7:30 and again, that will be our presentation.
Okay. Anything else under new business?
No.
Public comment? Being a quiet audience.
What a nice quiet.
I have one. Jen Scalise, 46, Nathan Drive. So I think my one comment is, as usual and annually, I think I come up here and say the same thing, so as you're talking with the FinCom and you're deciding what is needed from the town, just let the public know, let parents know what you need from us for support at town meeting, what you need us to do to bring in bodies at town meeting to support the schools and we're here for you. So talk to me, talk to members of the public and we'll back you up.
Thank you very much. That's what we need.
Is the voting budget somewhere available online for the community to see?
I thought it was.
I thought it was. Is that budget, is the proposed budget online? Yeah? Okay. I know Donna Beck has been out for almost two weeks, very sick with that flu, so we can do that. We'll get the word out, but yes, we, we need people to go to that meeting definitely too.
Anybody else?
Oh, yes, while I'm sitting here. Yesterday at the middle school was African Arts Day.
Oh, yes.
Thanks to funding from Clinton Cultural Council and the sale of the band Gold Cards at the middle school, we were able to have Crocodile River music that used to be associated with the African Arts Museum come for day. And the director, Zach, and then Master Jembe, drummer Isa, met with each social studies class in grade seven because it connects into their social studies curriculum and they brought 30 Junjuns and Jembes and they all drummed for their social studies class. And then in the afternoon, four more members of your group joined them and we had a concert in the gym for all of grade four, all of grade six, all of grade seven and the band on the horse. It was phenomenal. We can't be talking about it. The thing that I think impressed me the most was the students that I saw really engaged in drumming are not necessarily our students who like school or who did well at school. So it was, I thought, a very important way to connect with some kids, that we found their passion. It certainly tapped into our cultural diversity and one of my English language learners in the eighth grade today, he said, you know, my classmates and the ALLs, they, they came all morning, I think, two groups sat in for two classes. And he said, you know, my three friends and I are the best, so it was a great day on all accounts.
Well, that's great. Thank you. Robert, one last thing, I promise, just to let everyone know, I'm, I'm not around. Robert, one last thing, I promise, just to let everyone know, I'm not around...
Don't keep Jan here for as long as you can.
Sorry, Jan. Come on, Jan. No, I'm serving as the assistant chair for a NEAS visit at Stonem High School on April 30 through May 3, so I'll be here next week, all week, but the following... No, it must be after that. It's two weeks anyway, but yes, no, anyway, Stonem, if you're looking for me.
Maybe visit the zoo. If there's anything else, call for a motion to adjourn.
Hey, yeah.
Good evening, thank you all.
We'll return.
Thank you, awesome.